It is Wednesday, May 24th. Thank you to Zion, Labon. Good morning. It is Thursday, May 24th. This is a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council. We meet Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays. These meetings are open to the public and also on Channel 35 as well as on our website. We need 10 members for a quorum. It is now 10:05. We've had one call for members to come down to the council. Ask again Ms. Hahn, Mr. Padilla, Mr. Parks, Mr. Reyes, Mr. Rosendahl, Mr. Smith, Mr. Weiss, Mr. Wesson to please make their way down to the council chamber so we can begin business today. So again, ask Ms. Hahn, Mr. Padilla, Mr. Parks, Mr. Reyes, Mr. Rosendahl, Mr. Smith, Mr. Weiss, and Mr. Wesson to make their way down to the council chambers. Thank you. It is now 10:10. I'd ask that Councilmember Hahn, Councilmember Parks, Councilmember Reyes, Councilmember Rosendahl, Councilmember Weiss, and Councilmember Wesson. Again, as a matter of fact, I'd ask Councilmember Hahn, Parks, Rosendahl, and Weiss to make their way down to the council chambers. And if I could have quiet in the chambers, I'd like to recognize Councilmember Zion for a very, very special presentation this morning.
Fortuna, come join me from the mayor's office. I'm not going to leave you out. Thank you, Madam President, and colleagues. It's a real honor this morning to recognize national, national decathlon champion, the students from William Howard Taft High School in the San Fernando Valley. The scholars, the scholars. Taft High School. Well, let me introduce them first before I give an explanation. Zachary Ellington. Zachary, over here. Let's hear it for Zachary. Michael Farrell. Michael? You a basketball player?
No, football.
Football, football player, all right. Well, that's good. Farren Khan?
Yeah.
Wait so they can see you. We want everybody to see you at home. David Lopez. Don't be shy, don't be shy. You're national champions. David, I hope I pronounced this right. Novgorodsky. Otskri. David. Julia Ribova for her second appearance here. What are we honoring you for recently?
My SAT scores.
The what? SAT scores. You'd like one off the map, right? Maybe, all right. Well, we had it on for something special like that. Ateesh Sawant. Dean Schaefer. And Monica Scheckler. Monica, all right. And we have with us also the principal, who's a wonderful lady, who I've known since she arrived at Taft, Sharon Thomas. Hiding back there. What are you hiding back there for? Hiding behind the football player, Sharon. And also the coach of the team that we have with us, Arthur Burchin. Arthur, thank you for being here. Doctor. Well, excuse me. Oh, sorry. It says Arthur. Doctor Arthur. Well, here's where we go. Taft High School won its third U.S. Academic Decathlon in San Antonio, Texas. School previously won the national title in 1988 and 1993. Members dominated the competition, earning 43 individual medals and seven overall medals. Taft High School's team flexed its brain power in a contest of academic strength in 10 areas in over two days. Art, economics, essay, interview, language and literature, mathematics, music, science, social science, and speech. This year's topic was the European Renaissance: Renewal and Reform. The nine-member team scored 51,659.7 points out of 60,000 possible points, beating 38 other top schools from across the United States in the two-day competition held in San Antonio, Texas. On Friday, April 28th afternoon, won the super quiz competition, the final portion of the contest. The winners were announced at the awards dinner Saturday evening. And we've introduced the team members. We want to recognize that Dean and Julia earned first and second top scores respectively in the honors, 3.74 GPA and above. And Ateesh, David, Farren, and the scholastic 3.00, 3.74 GPA category nabbed first, second, and third top scores. And Zachary recognized for his first-place score. David had the highest score in the varsity, 2.99 GPA and below category. So we want to recognize and commend you folks. Also, I want to also recognize that I received a letter from Marlene Cantor, Board President of the LA Unified School District, and Superintendent Roy Romer, and they're very proud of this accomplishment. In addition, they wanted to illustrate that Newsweek Magazine has ranked 29 LAUSD high schools in the top 1,000 campuses nationwide. Cleveland, El Camino, Reseda, Canoga Park, Taft High School, all in my district. And last week, an additional 52 high-poverty campuses in LAUSD were given the distinction of Title I academic achievement schools in Cleveland, Hamilton Street, Nessel Avenue, Newcastle, Shirley Avenue, Tarzana Elementary, and Van Alden Avenue Elementary in my district. Also, unprecedented 32 of their elementary schools were awarded with the state's highest academic honor of the California Distinguished School Award. 25 of the USD campuses selected as Title I. So what we find is you folks have done extremely well, and other schools are doing extremely well. And to sum this up, the ninth national title for LAUSD schools, which have won 15 state championships since 1987. North Hollywood also took second place in the prestigious National Science Bowl, and that, I think, is in Wendy Grove's district. So we're going to hear from the doctor first, and then we'll hear from a student representative. Again, let's hear it for Taft High School National Academic Decathlon Champions from the United States of America. Doctor.
Thank you, Councilman Zion. While we're bragging, for the record, we want all of you to know that this team, these students that are standing behind me, have earned the highest score ever in any United States academic decathlon competition. So it's nice to know that the city of Los Angeles and Los Angeles Unified School District holds that record now. We'd like to have Zachary Ellington say something for... Oh, Monica, okay.
Zachary's throwing to Monica. Monica, you got it.
This is Monica Scheckler.
Monica. Thank you. We just want to thank the city council for recognizing us today, and we would like to hope that we've made you proud these past few months, originally representing LAUSD, state of California, and ultimately the United States of America in the academic decathlon competition. And so we have a plaque for Mr. Zion.
Oh, you do?
And also a T-shirt.
Well, thank you. Beautiful, thank you.
Here's also your European Renaissance T-shirt.
With all the students, that's beautiful. Thank you.
And this is for you. Hopefully it fits.
It will fit. Extra large, it will definitely fit.
So thank you.
Thank you all very much. And we're going to go back and do photos. We've got the resolution for the school, and we've got additional congratulations certificates for all of the recipients. So I want to again acknowledge and thank you all. You make the valley look good, you make L.A. SD look good, and I'm sure you make all your parents extremely proud. So on to higher education, as I know you're all going to pursue, so we wish you the best in the future years. And my time is up.
And but before you leave, Mr. Zion, Mr. Padilla would like to say a few words.
Mr. Alex Padilla.
Well, thank you, Mr. Zion, and congratulations to the whole team. I just wanted to stand up and thank Mr. Zion for bringing you into council. He's fortunate to be the representative of the area where Taft High School is, but I just got to tell you, with all the political talk going on about throughout the city and throughout the state about the state of public education in Los Angeles and beyond, it's just so wonderful to also recognize when things are working, when things are exemplary. And I think you set the standard that every high school and every student can try to live up to because you're a shining example that every student can achieve greatly. You're showing us that it's possible, and so I would just want to congratulate you on all your success. Thank you. And David Lopez, actually. See, he put me on the spot about a week and a half ago at St. Patrick's Church in North Hollywood. Somebody said he was going to be running against me in the future, and I promised him my vote, so just wanted to give him a little shout-out this morning.
And I'd acknowledge Mr. Labon, who'd like to say a few words.
I'd like to very much. Marshall High graduate. John Marshall, hi. Who was John Marshall? Anyone know? He was Supreme Court Justice, very good. You're very good there. Just two questions, Mr. Zion. This is tough. It's just great to see Taft be so successful and bring the recognition that it deserves, and you work so hard, your coaches, your teachers. It's really remarkable, and I know you joined a long list. I know John Marshall has had success in academic decathlon. LA high schools had some success, although not there. You had El Camino Real, your rival school there in the West Valley, but you work so hard. I just hope you have a great summer, and you don't have to worry about books at all and go out and enjoy and love the state of California, and good luck in your college careers. Congratulations to all of you. And Jose Weisar, we have to hear from...
Well, I was going to say, Mr. Weisar pushed his button, too.
I mean, the former president of the school board.
It was great seeing them at the school district, at the school board meetings, when we congratulated you there on your success. And here again, Taft is showing that really we're doing a great job with our students. And let me just thank the students for the hard work you put in. I know this is a lot of hard work, and the coaches and principal. It really takes a lot to prepare for this, and when I was at the school district, I recall you coming in and having the same type of acknowledgement, but it's great that we not only celebrate within the school district, but the whole city know how great we're doing at Taft High School, and congratulations again. It's great to see some familiar faces here. Thank you.
And we're going to also, let me also mention that we're going to be outside of Taft. We also have a sign posted, the premious decathlon. We're also going to have a sign posted inside the school with all of the students' names and the coach, so students in the future will know and recognize the wonderful work that was done. Also, Fortuna, from the mayor's office, you have a comment to make. We're going to be doing another presentation with the mayor at the school?
At the school.
June 9th. There'll be another presentation at the school, June 9th, with Mayor Antonio Villarreal. So we'll be participating in that. And we can't thank you enough for making us look good. I mean, people say LAUSD, LAUSD, and when you look at this accomplishment, and this isn't the first time, and I'm sure it's not the last time, but all of you make us all very proud, so best wishes in the future.
Thank you very much, Zion. Congratulations to all the students at Taft High. I went to that other Kennedy High School in the Northern Valley, but I know Taft High is a wonderful school, and we're so proud of you. It is not just Dennis who is proud of you, it's the entire city council and the mayor.
And the wonderful principal, who makes things happen there all the time, day and night, whenever it's happening, you're there. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for that presentation. Mr. Clerk, if you would call the roll.
Cartonist Gruel, Hahn, Weisar, Labon, Padilla, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Weiss, Wesson, Zion, Garcetti, 12 members present and a quorum, Madam President.
Yes, first item of business.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Wesson moves, Mr. Smith seconds.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Ms. Perry moves, Mr. Parks seconds.
On the regular agenda, items 1 through 8 are street lighting district items noted for public hearing, and the recommendation for council is to continue the hearings and ordinances to June 14th.
Those will be continued to June 14th.
Item 9 is a public convenience or necessity item in council district 10. The recommendation is to grant the application, and there is a card on the matter.
We will hold that item on the desk for a special.
Items 10 through 25 are items for which public hearings have been held.
Any specials on that item?
24, please.
We're, okay, 24. Any other specials, colleagues? Items 10 through 24?
10 through 25.
Excuse me, 10 through 25. We do have a card on item number 13, although there has been a public hearing on that item. We'll call that special with a card. Need a motion if that... Someone like to enter...
Chair?
Yes.
There are, how many cards on 13?
Just one.
Would you like me, I believe the speaker who is here is speaking for...
I'm sorry, say that again?
The speaker who is present on that item is speaking affirmatively.
Great.
Would you like me to...
Unless she'd like to speak, I think what we are is going to move the proposal today, and so we will keep your public comment card here for the public record as you were in favor of this item. Thank you, Ms. Perry. So we will not call that item special.
Okay. Oh, there she is.
Okay, no other items special. Madam Clerk, open the roll on those items. Close the roll. Tabulate the votes.
12 ayes.
Those items have been approved. Next items?
Madam President? Fourth with on 11, please.
Fourth with on item 11, thank you. On all the ordinances, we'll also be going fourth with, that is 10, 11, 12, and 13. Yes, Mr. Parks?
16 and 23 as fourth with.
15, 16, and 23. Okay. Mr. Clerk, next order.
Items 26 through 35 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
We will, those items that are in closed session, we will hold on the desk. That would be items number 27 and 34. Mr. City Attorney on item number 26, you'd like to make a brief comment?
Thank you, Madam President. Regarding the resolutions, direction for the city attorney's office to submit the ordinances within 30 days, our office will provide the ordinances within 30 days unless there are additional legal requirements and/or other committee directions required for certain ordinances.
Thank you. Yes, Ms. Perry, any other specials?
No, I just wanted to ask for 12 and 13 to go forth with.
All those ordinances going forth with, thank you. Thank you. Any other specials?
32.
32. Will go special? Okay. If not, any other specials? Madam Clerk, open the roll on the remaining items. Close the roll. Tabulate the votes.
12 ayes.
Those items have been approved. Fourth with on 26. Our budget, thank you.
Can we request 13 fourth with, please?
Yeah, all the ordinances today, 10, 11, 12, and 13 will all be going forth with. Yes, Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to, just for a second, acknowledge and welcome a guest, Mr. Mitch Mitchell. He's Regional Vice President, External Affairs for the Southern California Gas Company. As I'd like for him to rise, Mr. Mitchell. He's joining us here in City Hall. Thank you, welcome. He is the new Regional Vice President for External Affairs. And of course, he's joined by Mr. Michael Delatodo, a former colleague of ours, Whackman Wheeler staff. Welcome back to City Hall. Thank you.
Colleagues, on item 29, we did have a public speaker card, so that item, if we could ask for that to be reconsidered, Mr. Clerk, we need to ask that it be reconsidered. is that correct of vote? Uh, Madam Clerk, open the roll on reconsideration of item number 29. Close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Thirteen ayes.
That item will now be before us and be called special. Next item, Mr.-
Item 36 is a closed session item, do you wish to hold that on the desk?
That will also be held on the desk. I'd like us, if we, I think that's the last item, we recess into the special meeting. Colleagues, um, we could have everyone in the audience, um, in the side here, please be quiet. We are moving to the next item, which is our special agenda. Mr. Clerk?
Cardinatus Grul, Han, Weisar, Labange, Padilla, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Weiss, Weston, Zine, Garcetti, thirteen members present, and a quorum, Madam President.
First order of business.
Item one is an item for which public hearing has not been held, 10 votes are required for consideration.
Uh, we do have a card on that item, uh, what we may do, colleagues, is, uh, go ahead and take, uh, that item, uh, now, is that correct, Mr. Clerk, and then the remaining item is our closed session?
That's correct, Madam President.
Okay. If I could ask Ms. Sylvia Lynn Hawkins to come forward, please, on item number one on our special agenda, and again, if we could keep everyone's conversations down to a minimum, please. Ms. Hawkins?
Uh, good morning, my name is Ms. Sylvia Hawkins. Uh, concerning our education and healthcare, there's going on concerning, uh, vaccing, must say no on women's with vaccine or need a vaccine shot for any kids in school, especially with abortion pills, and stopping the wisdom of our brain.
Ms. Hawkins, if you could please use your comments directly, this is a Prop K assessment.
Okay, just thank you. As concerning the tampons and, and the flow of the blood concerning the nobr generation or the neurons in the brain coming down, we must see the evil side of stopping of the flow of blood in women's.
Ms. Hawkins, if I could ask you, this is about a Proposition K assessment for Parks and programs-
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. That item is now before us, um, Madam Clerk, excuse me, Mr. Parks, before we call the roll.
Uh, thank you, Madam President, I would just like to make a verbal amendment to this report, and direct the CAO and CLA, uh, for future years, not impacting this year, but for future years, that they create a budget, uh, timetable on Prop K that will allow us to review these documents in advance of the general fund budget. So we should be making these approvals in the earlier part of the calendar year, prior to the budget deliberations, they are taking off track because we're unable to have a budget meeting, and now we're rushing to make these decisions towards the end of the fiscal year. So, ask them in that verbal direction, that next year's process be done earlier and prior to the general fund budget.
Thank you for that amendment, Mr. Parks. Mr. Labange?
Yeah, I'd like a report from the city departments on this issue right here. Who's here?
Okay, if we're gonna-
Do we call it special?
We, uh, call it special then, Mr. Labange.
I thought it was called special when Mr. Parks said.
Okay. That item will then be called special, we will hold that on the desk.
Call it special.
Okay. So, Mr. Clerk, I know the remaining items are, um, going into executive session, at this point in time, we will hold those on the desk, um, and we'll recess our special meeting and go back to our regular meeting for public comment. And it looks like we have some special guests here today, but we'll go first with Sarah Mendoza, followed by Rachel Bessem, and followed by Richard Matzner.
Good morning, my name is Sarah Mendoza, I'm Executive Director of the LA Indigenous Peoples Alliance, I'm a field rep for the International Indian Treaty Council, and we are focused on human rights. I am here today to express to the City Council of LA that we come representing the South Central Farm. It is the largest urban farm in any city in the United States, we're located in Alameda and Avenue 41st. We're here to tell you that the city has failed to save this farm. Today, we can be taken out of this farm after raising over 6.1 million dollars for this farm. The city committed to giving money to save this farm, and I'd like to remind the City Council, that is not listening, Mr. Reyes, who is not listening, Mr. Parks, thank you, Mr. Weisar, for listening, is that this is the largest urban farm, the green space in central LA. This area has been identified as one of the areas that needs the most green spaces in the city. We are asking today that the City Council do the best that they can to save this farm, because it contains the most beautiful environmental and sustainable resources that we can have in this part of the city. People cannot find organic food, people cannot find healthy foods for their children, and when we talk about obesity, we talk about nutrition, and this is a great resource. We are here today, Mr. Reyes, we are here today to ask you to support, starting today, those supporting the South Central Farm are doing a sit-in, a sit-in, and they're going to stay there, and we are asking all of you to pay attention to what is happening today at the farm, because if anyone gets hurt, it will be on your conscience. There's children there, there's adults there, there's conscious political people, they're sitting there trying to save this farm. We need your support, we need you to take action, because today is when they could get evicted, and today is where people could get hurt, and we're asking you to please make phone calls, please allow this farm to stay, and if anything, just come and visit this farm, because it is a source of life and it's a source of health. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Are there any other representatives from the South Center Farmers want to speak before we go to the next speaker? No, okay. Thank you very much for being here this morning. The next speaker was Rachel Bessem.
I would like to give, um, the two minutes to Rick Matzner, and if you can please give him the courtesy of your attention.
All of you have tenants in your council districts who are being wrongfully evicted. Please look at page two of your package, I had it placed in front of you. It has an information sheet on the Costa Hawkins Act. This act, this information sheet is used by the Department of Housing, I believe it has mistakes on it resulting in wrongful evictions. When tenants call the Department of Housing's Public Information Counter for information about their rent-controlled condo, the employee checks this information sheet, and then unfortunately gives out wrong information. The result is that people are being wrongfully counseled, wrongfully evicted, and don't even receive relocation assistance. I repeatedly tried to bring the situation to the department's attention, instead, they sent me a blanket statement that the information sheet was correct, and that the sheet was now a non-public document. Then out of nowhere, the City Attorney's Office called and left a message on my machine, also saying the information sheet is now a non-public document. I am here to request two things. One, that you appoint someone to thoroughly investigate this secret document, someone who will follow through, someone who will not blindly accept assurances from the fox guarding the hen house. My second request is that you put some kind of temporary freeze on evictions until the information, until the investigation is complete. If incorrect information and forcible evictions are taking place, a temporary freeze would be the right thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Do you want to stop there? I, I have a second thing to make, to say.
Okay, please, go ahead.
Do you want to stop there? Do you want to discuss that, or should I go on?
Under public comment, sir?
Yes.
We cannot do, it, it is not noticed under the Brown Act, so we can't have the kind of dialogue on that specific issue-
Oh, okay.
We can have the legislative analysts come speak to you separately.
All right. Could I, may I play this?
Sure, you, under your two minutes, please, go ahead.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Matzner, this is Helen Yuen with the City Attorney's Office. I understand that you still have some concerns regarding the letter that was sent to you by the Housing Department yesterday. Just wanted to let you know that the document that you had in your possession is not a document that is distributed to the public. I would be interested to find out how you obtained that document, um, but in any event, um, I don't believe that you should be worried about any misinformation being handed out, because again, that document is not disclosed to the public, and the way that you obtained that document, um, not here's how that happened, but we are taking steps to ensure that documents such as those are not distributed to the public. In any event, if you still have further questions, I can be reached at 213-978-7980. However, the Department does believe that it has addressed your concerns. Thank you very much, goodbye.
That message from the City Attorney raises two issues. The first is intimidation, the second is secrecy. I'm a voting property-owning, tax-paying citizen of the United States, the State of California, and the City of Los Angeles. I never expected to see the day when the City Attorney's Office would attempt to intimidate a citizen who is just trying to look out for other human beings. People are being wrongfully advised, wrongfully evicted, and the response from the Department of Housing and the City Attorney's Office is, "Don't worry, no problem, because this is a non-public document." Secrecy and lack of transparency are bad for government and bad for society. Secrecy and lack of transparency only benefit people who have something to hide. My third and final request is that you reverse, and I repeat, reverse, all steps taken to create secrecy regarding this so-called non-public document. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, could you, um, you're, the, the property that you're talking about in question, and do you know which council district that is in? Was it specific property?
I'm sorry, what was the question?
Sir, specific property where this, you're referring to in a council district?
It, the, this information sheet recovers all of Los Angeles.
Okay. We will, uh, make sure again that someone from our Legislative Analyst Office comes over to talk to you to address the issues you've raised and be able to get back to you, so appreciate you being here today.
Were they gonna come over now to talk to me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker is, uh, Valinda Jo Wright, followed by Don Garza.
Hello. How are you guys this morning? It's lovely to see you, it's a nice day. I have a red light ticket, I'm gonna go take care of that tomorrow. It's always great to see you guys, I mean, you just make Los, I mean, we're so proud, I mean, it's just, we have such a wonderful city council, it's just terrific, you guys are spectacular, I just have to say. We also have a magnificent ethnically diverse Los Angeles Police Department, I mean, we have a, we have a wonderful city.
Thank you very much, Ms. Wright, appreciate your, your comments. Mr. Garza, followed by Michael Hunt.
Well, I see, uh, my name's Don Garza, and I live in, uh, Central City East, 412 East Fifth Street, I see Greg Smith is here, um, Señor Cárdenas is not. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to break those two in, because I got a, I yelled at City Council on Friday, and usually, before y'all were elected, I used to do that all the time, so y'all got broken in. Um, I'm a little disturbed by the LA Times, and I'm gonna tell you why I'm disturbed with the LA Times. On my blog, at one recently, I said that this City Council needed to be on some type of psychiatric medication, um, and it's referring to the ACLU thing, and I know that's on the agenda, but I'm not gonna talk about that. What I'm gonna talk about is the fact that the LA Times did not tell us that the vote was actually bifurcated, and that's why I wrote what I wrote, because I thought that, uh, all you guys voted on was appealing, but the vote was bifurcated to where you, if, if I'm correct, you voted on going, moving forward with language for the, for the 48, 10D, whatever that is, for sleeping on the sidewalk. So, and that's all I gotta say, is that, I apologize for saying if y'all need a medication, but the LA Times, it's, it's really, when, when you have to research, the research of a, a supposedly credible newspaper, in order to try to find out and have your opinion, there's a problem. The LA Times is not doing it, and I, I apologize for saying you guys need medication, I mean, sometimes, I, I do think sometimes you do, but, you know, we need the proper information if we're gonna have an opinion, and if we're actually gonna, gonna, you know, you know, know what you guys are doing. It made all you guys look like the devil from hell, you know, and I didn't appreciate that.
Thank you, Don, for being here. Before Mr. Hunt comes up, I'd like to acknowledge Mr. Rosendahl for a special introduction.
Uh, thank you, Madam President, that, this is an exciting moment for all of us. I'd like to ask the junior inspectors to all stand up, all of you young people there, let's give them a round of applause. If you want to know the future of public works, uh, Madam President, there's the future, and these junior inspectors' mission, stay standing, is to strive to be good students and maintain good grades, have a positive attitude, and be loyal to the program. Be courteous to your parents, teachers, and neighbors. Be observant in your neighborhood, and write down any violations on your observation sheet. Encourage others of how to maintain and beautify their neighborhoods. Never approach or talk to strangers. Never go into unsafe or potentially dangerous areas. As a junior inspector, remember, safety is always first. Could we all come up to the mic and just show yourself? Thank you all for being here, please.
Thank you, Mr. But before, um, I'd like to, Mr. Parks, um, has, uh, something to say, and Mr. Padilla, um, and if I could also ask Channel 35, you've been able to show the left side here, but the kids on the right side, I'd like to show them as well in one of the pictures today, so they can see themselves on TV tonight, when you have a chance. Mr. Parks?
Uh, thank you, Madam President. I'd also like to thank, uh, all of the schools involved, but particularly, our Charles Barrett School that's housed in the 8th District, and their principal is here today with, uh, those children, Precious Robinson, and we're gonna say, thank you for what you're doing in this program, and also, thank you for the monthly cleanup programs around your school.
Thank you, Mr. Parks, and, uh, Mr. Labange, you have a special, uh, you and Mr. Rosendahl?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Parks, Madam President, Mr. Rosendahl, Ms. Perry and I in our committee were greeted by this great group, but this is Farrell Armstead, who's gonna address the council, a very articulate young man.
Good morning.
Good morning.
This morning, what I'd like to say is that, at nowadays, and in our time, we will not treat nature correctly, and we litter, so, uh, the junior inspector crew will try to not only keep our schools clean, but also keep the city clean, and try to find, and if we find any litter on the ground, we will throw it in the trash cans.
Yeah!
I'd also like to say that the junior inspector crew will also take care of our neighborhoods and our schools and the rest of, and all the city that it can take care of. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Reyes, did you want to say a few words?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. Just wanted to acknowledge and thank all the young people for their positive attitude, and hopefully, they could, um, train some of the adults, and make them aware of how we should keep our city clean. But I also wanted to welcome Ann Street School, Ann Street's a very special place, it's a couple of blocks away from the cornfield, we just saw a bunch of corn grow there, and live in a real nice area, and I'm thanking them for their hard work. Ann Street, raise your hand. Welcome to City Hall.
Thank you. I'm Mr. Padilla.
Thank you, Madam Chair, just also want to recognize, on behalf of my colleague, council member Cárdenas, who's not here this morning, the group of students from Sylvan Elementary School, uh, Mr. Kraft, the principal, and Ms. Peralas, the, the coordinator, it's great to see the young kids from the Valley participating in this too. It's not just a priority for the City Council, uh, to focus on public works and street services, but it's great to see the next generation taking leadership as well. Congratulations.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Weston.
Uh, yes, uh, thank you, Madam President, and I want to give a, a shout-out to the kids that are here from my district, where's Hillcrest Elementary? Yeah! And Baldwin Hills Elementary, with the, uh, principal, Joanne Politis here, let's give him a round of applause, thank you for all you do.
And, uh, Madam President, thank you, when they visited our Committee Arts at Parks, I said, "Listen there, inspectors, I want all these schools, on behalf of all the council members here, to come and inspect in a soft opening this summer, early September, the new renovated Observatory at Griffith Park," and they're all gonna be our guests, thanks to you, council members. Give them all a big hand.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Labange. Thank you to all of the students in the, in the program, we look forward to you cleaning up our neighborhoods, thank you so much for being here. Thank you. Our next public speaker is Michael Hunt.
I owe you guys all the apology, and I do it deep and sincerely from my heart, but I want to educate you guys all at the same time. So I'm giving each and every one of you guys my apology and my sincerity that I deeply regret the last three days of me being the monster. Now, the good side of this is I'm here to educate you guys, as well as the law is concerned. If you can focus on this right here, and it says Harry Perry versus the City of L.A., Ninth Appellate Court, and it shows you the First Amendment rights that we had, but you guys can all go to the case. The case is 965554597. The First Amendment has not changed. Now, if there was any questions about this, this right here, it tells you right here, it says, "Because of the distinctions made in the ordinance implicating fundamental First Amendment rights and that they are not nearly tailored in the city's significance, government interest, we reversed the decision." I'm the only one that got it in court, you guys. Here's what the city attorney had to do to me, to beat my constitutional rights. They had to file a motion. If it was valid, they wouldn't have had to file this motion so that I couldn't afford me my constitutional rights. But now that it's in court, I can overturn the decision because I lost with the Ninth Appellate Court, which has been done right here. So I want you guys to really go to this case, 9655545. The First Amendment has never changed right here, you guys, and like I said, I give you guys all the respect in the world, but honesty is always the best policy. Honesty, if you keep honesty involved, it's always the best policy. All I want is my First Amendment rights. Thank you, and my name is Michael Hunt.
Thank you. Next speaker is Noel Weiss.
Councilmembers, good morning. I wanted to report on Lincoln Place because it's gonna be before you on Tuesday. It went into the Plumb Committee yesterday, and basically there was no decision because Mr. Wezar, who's here today, but he was sick yesterday, so hopefully you're feeling better, Mr. Wezar. But it's very important, I handed out a packet of materials to each individual council member that basically responds to Aimco's threats of damage claims, basically. That's apparently where we're down to now. They're apparently saying that if you pass this motion, the sky is gonna fall, and the city's gonna get sued for millions and millions of dollars. The reason why that claim is hollow is because there's a court order that says they can't develop the property, and if for some reason the city council did something wrong, they can go to court, they can get the action reversed and be done with it. They won't be damaged. Meanwhile, for them to develop, even under the existing conditions, they have to go get an EIR. The EIR takes a year. So this idea, this idea that somehow they're gonna be damaged is just bogus. And what we're down to, if we want to get this case resolved, we need to get this motion passed. We have six cosponsors. Now we're in a situation where we're gonna need 10 votes. Mr. Padilla, we need your vote. Mr. Wezar, we need your vote. Now, the other thing that I wanted to know, I wanted to let everybody know, and Mr. Padilla, this is important to you, too, seriously, they play this game, Aimco, where they try to disqualify people because of conflict of interest. Now, I don't know the rules, okay, but relative to your situation, I really think it's important that you find out and examine it so that, not a problem, wonderful. Okay, well, we'll basically look forward to that, and that's it for now, okay? Thank you, guys. Hopefully you'll read the materials, and we can do what we gotta do. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Noel. The next speakers are Felicia Ford, followed by Patricia Slater and Marla.
My name is Patricia Slater. I am vice president of the Woodland Memorial Park Foundation, and I come to you today, city council. Felicia Ford and I had submitted a letter to Mr. Steve Cooley, the district attorney, which to date we have not had any response to that. So I come to you today to, we have evidence of charges and new criminal charges against Mr. Glenn Wong, who is owner of Woodland Memorial Cemetery, and we would like to have, on May 14th, I took my mother to go see her mother at Woodland Cemetery. And of course, Mother's Day is supposed to be a very joyous celebration for all mothers. Well, the state of the cemetery was disgusting. It was, it looked more like a dump site, and my mother fell to her knees when she saw her mother's headstone had been moved. So we come to, I come to you today for my mother, as well as myself, to please give the cemetery to the family members, which we know that we will take care of the cemetery, which Mr. Wong has not. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Marla. I'm here to speak on the destruction that took place at Woodland Cemetery. After living behind the cemetery for 18 years, I've witnessed a lot of destruction. Burning in barrels, horrible odors, clothes were found in my backyard. Body parts, lots of family members came to bury their loved ones, not knowing that their loved ones were not being properly buried. The caskets were left out overnight. The smell was unbelievable. My kids couldn't even play in the backyard. It's very hurting for my family to live behind such destruction. Several of the family members that have loved ones at Woodland Cemetery, myself and also my family, it has been a nightmare, knowing that such destruction has been done, witnessing body parts, and also the smell is just horrible. Caskets were being moved around. I've witnessed several times that I've seen funerals being held, and the caskets, after the family members would leave, the caskets would be just unattended to. Later on in the night, I would smell this horrible odor, and not knowing that what was going on, that that is what they were doing, was burning remains, and tombstones were being moved around. It was a lot of movement and burning going on back there. It was horrible.
Hi, Felicia Ford, Woodland Memorial Park Foundation, the president of Woodland. I brought a couple of the family members here just to give you some information as to what has been really going on in the cemetery, and there are a lot of other family members and a lot of other stories with regards to their loved ones in the cemetery. You know, when I come here, I get numb when I stand here, because I really want to come and talk about Woodland, but I actually want to come and talk about city issues. I first want to say before I continue on, too, with regards to the farm issue, you know, when my grandfather died, he said, "When I'm dead and gone, and he's dead and gone." He said, "When they come and get Mr. Lopez, or Mr. Garcias, or Mr. Rodriguez's farm, you gather up the neighborhood and the community, and you go and get everyone, and you go and you stand on that farm with babies, women, and children, and men, and fight for Mr. Lopez and their farms." Moving on from there, I'm gonna have to call on my, I'm gonna have to call on some individuals now, 'cause I can't keep coming down here. I've given all that I can to help these Woodland family members. My life has been a ransom, and you know what a ransom is. I've given it six years. Mr. Garcetti, I want to say that your father was very respectful to me. He returned my phone call. He sent his deputies to the meetings that I held with many government officials on behalf of the Woodland family members. It's unfortunately, I have to say, Steve Cooley, his office has not been really respectful and responsive to Woodland family members, and it really is not only a disgrace, but it's very hurtful. I say to Mr. Cooley, the family members are preparing a statement for, as I indicated to you, Attorney General Locke here, and Steve Cooley. We've tried to bring new charges here recently, and we're not really getting any response. So what I have asked to do now, I have helped some of these family members in the cemetery, the FBI and the CIA have family members in that cemetery, and I didn't learn that until a few years later. And they said to me that if, in fact, I needed to call upon them...
I'm sorry, if you can conclude your thoughts on this one?
I will, but I want to say, I brought individuals here, and I'm not sure how your time goes. I thought if you bring more family members, you get more time to speak.
Yeah, we give two minutes to each person.
Okay. It seems to be a little bit different. Do I need to bring more? Because I look at your time clock, and the clock says six...
That's for the overall time. I'm sorry for that mistake. We should probably find a way to fix that. That's the overall time for the minimum of public hearing that we need to have. We often go over that, because by state law, we have to do at least 10 minutes of overall hearing, but the clock right there is for each speaker. That's two minutes.
I see the clock that I'm speaking of, but I watch a lot of other things while I'm sitting here waiting to speak.
Sure.
Well, I will wrap it up. I am calling on the FBI and the CIA to come and help me. I have helped your families, and I ask that you now come help me. I have a lot of documentation and a lot of knowledge, and it's more than what happened in the cemetery. There are a lot of hands in this, and I want to share that information with you. Thank you, Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Ms. Ford. We appreciate your comments, and thank you to the family members you brought as well. Candido Maris is our next speaker.
Good morning, Mr. President, councilmembers. I hope everyone read this this morning. Early jail release scrutinized. As the chairperson of the Van Nuys Community Court, we deal with that issue. It stated here that over 50,000 inmates are released early because they're not able to house them. Can you imagine what we could do with that manpower if we put it on the streets, removing graffiti, removing trash from our streets? That's not going to happen, because as long as they're able to accept jail term, and then they're released because they can't be held, these people are gonna take that. In our community court, we had one individual that was arrested 18 times. 18 times. And again, whenever he was arrested, he would take the jail time, because he knew he would be out in two or three days. I ask that you talk to those who are in charge of the jails and ask them that we stop that or we change it, because again, if we could have 50,000 individuals working on our streets, can you imagine the quality of life change that could take place? Please, I hope that you'll support us in making that change. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Maris. That closes our general public comment. If we can return to the agenda, next item, please, Mr. Clerk.
Item nine was called special for a card from the public.
Okay. Item nine, we have a card from the public. Sylvia Hawkins, if you'd like to come forward on item number nine.
As we begin to reestablish all food and drug service stores and trades, we must say no on all organic foods, any alcohol, or wine product trades. All of organic food has been sent made here to be destroyed with poison by these lands' prime ministers, whom country we are bombing now, whom is Prince Charles and his sons from British. We are asking all farm lands of California to be aware of why there is no jobs for farmers. Even if you are paying your rent, you are still asked to move out, because Prince Charles is only leaving a rent bill on all property with food poisoning. For example, at Trader Joe, I went to the store concerning the price, don't look at, but by buying bananas, we must be ready or be with taquita and not dale or dough with organic inside of the banana. These leaders are anti-tourists, here to distribute goods without any money or any gang of money for their country. I'm not with the plan for illegals or legals to transfer or travel or work three months in United States of America, then back overseas. Because of this style of three-month travel, it will not help our real estate, our stability, and our business in long-term of hiring qualified, quality workers. Thank you very much. My name is Sylvia Hawkins.
Thank you very much, Ms. Hawkins. Somebody else wish to add their thoughts on this? If not, let's prepare the roll on the item, and, oh, sorry, Mr. Labonge. Oh, on a different thing? Okay, let's, and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Mr. Labonge, and then Mr. Parks. Yes, sir, Mr. Labonge.
On this issue, Mr. Parks?
On special one, I was able to resolve a question that I had, and if there's no need, we can move forward on special one.
Okay, we're still in the regular meeting, so when we get to the special meeting, I'll make sure we do that. Mr. Parks?
Mr. President, I'd request that we could see if we could take item 32 out of order. We have a couple of community people that would like to make a public comment on that issue.
Okay. Does anybody object to taking 32 out of order? If not, Mr. Parks, on number 32, was that notice for public comment, Mr. Clerk?
That deals with the extension of a reward motion.
You would have to move a public hearing. We've got two cards on it. A public hearing's not been, so we will ask Valinda Jo Wright to come forward, and Antoinette Stringer.
Yes. As they come up, Mr. President, Mrs. Antoinette Stringer is the mother of the deceased, and Robin Hood is the aunt of the deceased, and this is a reward motion in that we're asking for an extension. We did this previously in council. I'd like to ask Mrs. Stringer if you'd like to make some comments at this time.
I'm here today regards to my son, Johnny Stringer, who was murdered September of 2005. He had just begun college the day before. I'm asking for the public's help. I need your help. I need closure with this. So I'm here today also for the reward motion to be extended. My family has been dealing with this. This is my only son, so I need the public's help. Anyone knows any information or has any information that they can give, please contact the 77th Division Station in Los Angeles. I just need the help. I do. If anyone can understand what I'm feeling right now, what I'm going through, me and my family, God only knows. If anyone can help me, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Stringer.
Thank you. We have another public speaker, Mr. Parks?
No, that's just Mrs. Stringer.
Sorry, Valinda Jo Wright also filled out a card for this?
This is Wright. Did you have...
I just wanted to tell you I'm sorry for your loss. I also lost my daughter. She was 16, and I hope somebody would come forward and help defend...
You might want to get to the microphone.
Oh, I just wanted to tell you that I'm sorry for your loss. I lost a daughter also, and I hope that someone would come forward, you know, with some information about what's going on in the community, because life is really precious, and people don't seem to value it very much anymore.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Parks?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just for the general public awareness that in October 2005, the original motion went forward. This incident occurred on September the 1st, 2005. Johnny D. Stringer is only 17 years old, was fatally wounded at 10021 South Harvard Boulevard. After an exhaustive investigation, LAPD detectives have been unable to identify the suspects. They also believe that this reward and its extension will aid them in getting new information and hopefully develop community assistance. Anyone that has any information, please contact Detective Teddy Hammons at 77th Division, (213) 485-1383. And I'd ask that we have unanimous vote on the extension of this $50,000 reward.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. Somebody else wish to be heard on this? If not, let's please prepare the roll, Madam Clerk, and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
That is approved, and let's go forthwith on that, please. Thank you for coming in to testify today. If we can recess this and go into the special meeting and take up item one. Mr. Labonge said his questions have been answered. Anybody else wishing to be heard on special one? If not, let's prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
That is approved. If we can continue the special meeting's closed-session items into the regular meeting now, and we'll return to the regular meeting. And next item, please.
Item 24 was called special by Councilmember Reyes.
Okay, Mr. Reyes, item 24.
Thank you, Council President. I just rise and ask for support. This is in District One. It's a Riverside Drive Bridge grade separation replacement project. It's a project that essentially allows us to create a focal point, given the birthplace of the city. It's right at the confluence where the Royal meets the Los Angeles River. It's across the street from a major corner in which this city and the county is invested in the Riverside Alley River Center. River Center. This bridge essentially is designed to be redeveloped, will add a bike lane. The bike lane will connect to the bike path that's right now evolving on the District 13. Will give us that connection that'll get us to Griffith Park and hopefully to downtown. This is the part of the Figueroa that used to go through Elysian Park into downtown. Back in the '30s, they shut it down. They built a freeway in the '40s, and now you have a very sharp turn that's dangerous. It needs to be redone. We're going to be introducing a roundabout where it's a six-point corner. We'll redesign it next to the Santa Monica Conservancy's fountain. It'll be a landmark, be a connection to the river, the river center, the new 40-acre park. It'll be walking distance from the Gold Line Station and the new development that is evolving next to the Avenue 26 Station as well. So I want to thank the departments for their hard work. We currently have Avenue 19 Bridge under construction, or should say reconstruction. It's been done with much public input, many community meetings, and I just want to thank the city fund for their hard work and ask for an eye vote.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes, and thank you on behalf of the constituents of the 13th District that you're doing that work on behalf of as well. We just opened the newest park in the city about an hour ago at March Street Park along Los Angeles River, and it's all part of tying that together, and we really are very appreciative of your leadership there. If nobody else wishes to be heard, we will open up the roll on this, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
That is approved. Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Next item, please.
Item 29 was called special for a card from the public.
Okay. Item number 29, I'd like to ask Sylvia Hawkins to come forward. Is Ms. Hawkins here? Ms. Hawkins, are you still here? If not, we will open and close the public hearing on that. Anybody who wishes to be heard on this? If not, let's prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Mr. President, that would leave you with all the closed-session items.
Okay, colleagues, is there any? Item 27, we can go into closed session about. It's one that we've talked about before. This was something the city attorney recommended. I don't know if you want to speak on this, Mr. City Attorney, that we take it up again. The idea, obviously, we can debate everything again, but we've, I think, also discussed this, and we wanted to make sure that pursuant to a letter that we received, we legally went through the procedures of the council again on our decision there. So, Mr. City Attorney?
Thank you, Mr. President. On this item, item 27, any discussions in relation to the prior amending motion 46A discussed in council on May 2nd, in which council directs the chief legislative analyst to report to the city council within 60 days of May 2nd, 2006, on potential alternatives to LAMC Section 41.18D must be done in open session.
Okay, colleagues, I'd like to officially open the public hearing. There are no cards. Does anybody wish to be heard on this? If not, I would close the public hearing now. Mr. Weiss?
I just want to, I just want to clarify. This is the matter involving the homeless case that's in front of the Ninth Circuit. Is that what this is?
That's correct.
And there was previously a vote on this after, in closed session, following a closed session discussion. That vote was not reported in open session. First of all, the discussion was not held in open session. I wish it had been. Then that vote was not reported in open session. Is that correct?
It was not reported on that day. The next day, I did make a report, but it was not made on that day.
So what, this is a...
In essence, secure for the failure to report.
This is a do-over, all right? That's what this is. And are we going to revote on the item?
Counsel should.
And the vote we're taking is, if you vote yes, you are either instructing or requesting the city attorney to file a petition for rehearing en banc?
Not quite. When we did it before, a no vote, well, we took it in two different ways, but the city clerk can remind us. We, I believe, took a vote of whether or not we should not appeal first.
I wasn't in session at that time, but my understanding was the question was bifurcated and the second part failed and the first part passed.
I guess, and back up for a second. I'm not seeking to reopen the debate on the item. I think the item has been discussed. I just want to know when you call the question, precisely what the questions are, so we can figure out whether we want to vote yes or no.
One question will be whether counsel should direct the chief legislative analyst to report to city council in 60 days from May 2nd on potential alternatives to municipal code section 41.18D. Another matter for discussion in closed session will be a status report on the appeal, the en banc appeal, and if there are any motions made by counsel giving us further direction on that. However, the appeal, the petition was already filed, and we would give a status report on that. And if counsel would like to, wishes to give us further direction or wants us to stop the appeal, then that would be entertained.
So what's the do-over part of what we're doing today? It's on the CLA instruction part of the motion?
That's correct.
Okay, so that everyone agrees with, come back and, you know, write a new law that's a better law that people agree with, that's constitutional. Sure, do that. The second part, that's been mooted out by the fact that the city has, in fact, filed this petition for rehearing already.
Arguably, it's been mooted out.
But we also could, could be directing the city attorney nevertheless. Even though they've taken the action, we could, as a body, direct the city attorney.
We could. I don't think there's any, I don't think there's, there aren't any votes to do that here. I just want to know practically what we're voting on today.
Absolutely. Okay. Mr., sorry, Ms. Perry and then Mr. Rosendahl.
Mr. President, I'd like to ask for clarification, if you don't mind. As you recall last time, a number of people weren't here on that day. And if it is appropriate, if we can report or share with our colleagues why we're discussing this for the second time today. Hold my time. And maybe the city attorney needs to do that. Again?
I could start and then...
Mr. City Attorney?
When this was in council on May 2nd, coming out of closed session, there should have been a report regarding the actions taken in closed session. I made a report the next day. However, we, our office, decided that it would be better to have it fully reconsidered. And in addition, in the interim, the city received a letter from Carol Sobel complaining about the procedure.
And please share with everybody, everybody doesn't know Carol Sobel. Hold my time. Who's Carol Sobel?
She's with the ACLU, I believe, or she is a litigant in these matters. She's prosecuting the case for the homeless in this matter.
And the nature of the letter, because I've not seen it.
The nature of the letter, it was actually sent to Mr. Garcetti's office, and I think every county copied to all the council offices, basically complaining that it should have been announced in open session. And another letter...
Perry doesn't have their copy. We're getting ours. We'll make sure it's distributed.
Thank you. I have actually a copy in front of me.
Oh, we do? Okay.
She's, actually, Ms. Sobel sent two letters. The second letter complained that there were people in closed session that should not have been, and thereby the city waived its attorney-client privilege. We dispute that. And then in her first letter, which I now have in front of me, Ms. Sobel complains that the actions were not reported properly. And so that's what we attempted to do May 3rd, and that we are doing today in an effort to cure any perceived deficiency in the reporting.
So is today, in effect, a technical correction in some ways?
That's one way to say it. Otherwise, it could be known as a cure for failing to report it on May 2nd.
And on the second letter you referenced, on someone being in here in closed session, what is our, what is our response to her on that?
Our response...
Hold my time.
...will be that she's incorrect in her allegation that unauthorized people were in closed session.
Okay. Mr. President, I know we've discussed this item extensively, and there are more people here today than there were the day we voted. And on the day that we did vote, we decided to support the city attorney and his decision to file the appeal in the Ninth Circuit decision. And I, I can push my button again later if we end up getting into a substantive discussion on the merits or not, but suffice it to say that since we did that, had even more people die over on Skid Row. But I can get into that later if we need to. So I will press my button again later if I need to speak again.
Mr. Rosendahl.
Could we ask the city attorneys to come forward that were part of the process in the last meeting?
Leave Mr. Lewellen. Does that have to, would you come forward, Mr. Rosendahl?
Please hold my time.
Good morning, Mr. President. Rich Lewellen from the city attorney's office, along with Mike Kleisen, Janet Baghegan, and Amy Field.
For the record, tell us what the Ninth Circuit did do and why the city attorney's office has appealed it, filed an appeal.
Councilmember, the, we're happy to tell you what is the procedural status of the case.
Please do, yeah.
To the extent the legal strategy, it's the council's call, whether they, normally that is conducted in closed session.
I understand. But tell us.
You know, the district court ruled for the city. The plaintiffs appealed. An appeal, the Ninth Circuit ruled for the plaintiffs. We have filed a petition for rehearing. There's new news as of last night. The Ninth Circuit has requested briefing from the plaintiffs on the petition for rehearing, their response to that petition, which they have scheduled for three weeks from now, at which point then they will consider that petition. We may or may not be asked to file a response to that, and they will consider their petition for rehearing, which is pending before the, and the petition is filed pending before the three-judge panel or in the alternative for the full court to consider en banc.
And what did your petition contain that you put into them?
Sure, we're happy. It's a public document. We're happy to, I brought copies for you.
Yeah, please give us a quick summary of it, would you, please?
Councilmember, we're happy to briefly summarize what the petition is.
Well, we made several points.
What's your name?
Amy Field.
Hi.
We made several points. One of the primary points was that the Ninth Circuit's decision conflicted with prior decisions of the Ninth Circuit. We argued that the Ninth Circuit decision conflicted with decisions of other circuit courts of appeal, and we also argued that the Ninth Circuit's opinion was basically meddling into issues that were of local concern in terms of what can be made criminal and what cannot be made criminal.
And so they responded last night with something? What did they do yesterday?
Yesterday, they issued a ruling asking the plaintiffs to file an opposition to our petition.
I see. And do they set a timeframe for that?
21 days.
I see. Is there anything else we need to know on the record in the sunshine here about what's going on?
Councilmember?
Because I just might say parenthetically that I'm not a lawyer, and I know we have two great lawyers on our group, but when we went into closed session last time, frankly, I just can't say if it was necessary or not necessary. I just, we had a nice discussion among ourselves, but I just didn't have that sense. So would I like to know what on the record can you say that would help us understand the issue?
Councilmember, again, there are two things with regard to the litigation and your strategic decisions. It's your call whether that's in closed session or not.
Sure.
The one other thing you did discuss the last time, which I believe should be discussed in open session, is if there's going to be a direction to staff about researching alternatives, which is an open session, a policy discussion about whether the city wants to consider different kinds of laws.
Is there any opinion you'd like to give us about that right now?
No, Councilmember. That's your policy decision, and I understand you, the last time, instructed staff to report back to you on alternatives.
And have we been reported back to? Do we know? We asked for 60 days. So we'll get that in about 45 days from now?
Councilmember, I think the CLA is taking the lead on that. My recollection was 60 days.
Well, that's all I have to ask. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay, anybody else wish to be heard right now? Let's keep that on the desk then for closed session. And that is all the open-session items we have, Mr. Clerk. Is that correct?
All the open sessions have been handled.
Okay, pursuant with California state law, we will now go into executive session to discuss legal matters before us. Any decisions that we make that are, that need to be publicly noticed, we will do in open session. If we can please clear the chambers. Thank you. Welcome back into open session, colleagues. Mr. City Attorney, we took a number of actions, and I think we have a couple of things to take care of as well. If we could take the first item, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Item number 27, in closed session, council voted on whether the city attorney should withdraw its petition or appeal. In Jones versus City, the vote was three ayes, seven noes. Councilmembers Huesar, Weiss, and Rosendahl voted no. Councilmembers Cardenas, LeBange, Padilla, Reyes, and Smith were absent.
Okay, thank you.
And then by unanimous consent, the matter was received and filed.
We have a second, we have that item before us. We have a second action, colleagues, about the report back from the CLA's office in 60 days from May 2nd. If there's nobody wishes to be heard on that item, we will open the roll on that aspect, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
We will look forward to hearing the CLA's report back on that next item that we took. Action on in closed session?
On the special meeting agenda, on item two, there's a recommendation for settlement in the amount of 5.6 million in the case of Cleveland versus City of Los Angeles.
Okay, colleagues, Cleveland case, 5.6 million dollar settlement is before us in open session. Madam Clerk, if you please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item three from the special meeting, there's a recommendation to authorize the city attorney to retain outside counsel in connection with the Kern County Biosolids Initiative and to appropriate 600,000 from available cash within the Sewer Construction Maintenance Fund.
Okay, if we can open the roll on that, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved. Next item.
On item four from the special meeting, there's a recommendation for settlement in the amount of 125,000 in the case of Derek Evans, Jorrell Evans, and Isaiah Morbly versus City of Los Angeles.
Okay, colleagues, anybody wishing to be heard on that in open session? If not, let's prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
And the last item, item five from the special meeting, there's a recommendation for settlement in the amount of 1,325,000 in the case of Susan Shariaco and Peter Shariaco versus City of Los Angeles.
Mr. City Attorney?
And in addition, the settlement would include the city taking title to plaintiff's property.
Okay. Anybody wishing to be heard on that item? If not, let's please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved as well. Next order of business?
Council has motions for posting a referral.
Those are posted and referred?
Their excuses on the desk. Councilmember Reyes requests to be excused Wednesday, June 7th, to leave at noon for city business. That meets council policy.
Mr. Reyes is excused.
Councilmember Cardenas requests to be excused to arrive at 10:30 on Tuesday, June 20th, for city business. That also meets council policy.
Mr. Cardenas is excused.
Councilmember LeBange requests to be excused June 27th, 28th, and 30th for personal business. That meets council policy.
Okay, is excused.
Councilmember Perry requests to be excused Friday, June 9th, for city business. That also meets council policy.
Okay, she is excused.
And Councilmember Rosendahl requests to be excused Friday, June 2nd, for city business. A motion is required.
Okay, Ms. Perry moves, and Mr. Zion seconds. If there's no objection, he is approved.
That clears the desk.
Okay, we had two unexcused absences here today. Mr. Smith left early. Mr. Smith left early, and Mr. Cardenas was in unexcused absence today for the record. Announcements, colleagues? Announcements? Okay, we have lost a quorum, colleagues. I was just informed we lost a quorum, so the folks will keep their adjourned motions for this Friday's meeting. We will next meet on Friday of this week at 10:00 a.m. here in city council chambers, and this meeting has lost quorum and is adjourned. Thank you.